Okay, so the second big move is one that really helps us not only have the identity of Lewisville with this green centerpiece, but has that really be part of everybody's everyday life as much as they would like it to be. And so the idea of extending the green is, you know, here's that green centerpiece we were just talking about. The emphasis here is on all these arrows showing that connection back and forth between the green centerpiece area and the neighborhoods and the business areas of this community. So that this is not just about a place you go once in a while, but it's part of your everyday life experience. So our target here is connecting the green centerpiece to neighborhoods and business areas, prioritizing the investments so that the city is bringing those kinds of green things throughout the community, as you mentioned a minute ago, Mayor. And then using that to help attract folks who are looking for that kind of a lifestyle. So I think those are the general targets of what this big move is about. Here are the reasons that we think this is an important big move for Lewisville at this point in time. You'll have a very good parks plan. It's recent, it's got lots of great recommendations, it's very ambitious. And so we think that this big move builds on the strengths of that parks plan, but by looking at it in the context of this overall vision for the whole community, that that will help set priorities for the investments out of that whole big plan, to set some priorities for what needs to happen first. As you were saying, Neil, what's going to yield the most results for the investment in the short term? So we think that this idea of extending the green helps us to strengthen and clarify the priorities for investment in that really good park system that you have. Having these daily connections makes this green centerpiece even more valuable to people. There's lots of research about both health benefits and intellectual benefits for kids growing up with that close access to trails and to open spaces. And so by doing this, making this explicit connection to the neighborhoods and business areas, you further that idea. So the folks who want that lifestyle will say, "I want to be in Lewisville." That in particular relates to the millennial generation. And the millennials, as probably you all know, are the folks who were born and around from about 1980 till about 2000, and they're the ones that are now, you know, college, starting their careers, starting, you know, moving out into the world. They have really different objectives and values than those of us baby boomers did in general at that point. And they place a really strong priority on this kind of character of a place to live and a place to work. So as you think about making sure that Lewisville is appealing to the folks that are coming up, this is something that's really important to be able to do that. And I think it is different from the priorities that we've seen in past years and in past generations. So I think that helps not only for the residents, but also for the businesses, because a lot of folks want to live close to where they're working. A lot of businesses are wanting to see this kind of location for themselves as well. So we'll talk more about that when we get to sustainability. But I think it helps for the economic development side of things too. And I think I've kind of said this already, but incorporating the parks investments into this bigger picture about the whole community, the residential development and so forth, makes those investments even more valuable to the community as a whole. Okay, and this item has four key priority areas, top action priorities. Number one, ensure that the adopted trails plans and parks plans are implemented in ways that achieve this vision. So basically take a look at those plans in light of this overall vision so that you can set some priorities that way. If you need to make some refinements, you're able to do that as well. But make those things sync up and then carry them out. And along with that is the map of the trails. Let me cover the other top priority recommendations. And then I'm going to ask Steve to explain what the colors are that you see on these maps. Okay, second priority is the concept, and this is really a sort of a perspective idea of a goal, is to say, use these investments so that residents in all of the neighborhoods have access within a reasonable walking distance by 2025. This is, we're not saying a specific distance at this stage of the game, but this is an idea that many communities are looking at, as I said before, about the health benefits for folks and the exercise benefits. So the idea that, you know, let's make sure that all of our folks in all of our neighborhoods have easy access to places where they can walk. Creating special green destinations throughout the community, again, not just in the green centerpiece, but in plazas, in neighborhood parks, all those kinds of areas. And then fourthly, looking at a structure for private and nonprofit engagement. Here again, there are examples in many communities of friends groups, of foundations, of other things that partner with the city when they're looking at something that's kind of this bigger picture about that green investment, that natural investment. And so we think that it's worth exploring some additional ideas like that so that again, we're leveraging the public investment and getting people engaged, frankly, getting their energy and their marketing and all of that going in the same direction with the city as well. So those are the four priorities that we have identified for extending the green. The map that you see around the room and on here shows where we're at in terms of the trails. And Steve, you might want to go over to that one maybe, or this one?
I think Bob's actually going to do it.
Is Bob going to do it?
But while he gets up, I was going to remind you yesterday when we drove through Castle Hills, one thing that Chris Bratt kept pointing out to us was that connection. And in fact, at one point, he said, "We wanted to make sure that there were parks within walking distance of all of our neighborhoods." That is a plan for the community.
Yes, yeah, so he has that specific number. We're not suggesting what the right number is for all of Lewisville yet, but that concept is part of what we think is important. Bob, I want to highlight the key aspects of what you've got on there. I know that you've got a lot on there, so help us understand the key points.
I think one thing that's important to understand is when we initially started doing trails in Lewisville, we were trying to concentrate in neighborhoods. And we had trails that were done just in the parks around Memorial Park in L.A. Woods, County Street Park. So we had some of those small areas that are really disconnected throughout the different areas. Over at Railroad Park, we did that. With our Trail Master Plan, and the reason for the standalone plan was to concentrate on the trails and connectivity of it. The master plan concentrates on the spine trails and tried to set a priority for that so that we could begin to connect all of these areas. That's not to say that we wouldn't come in at some point and through a neighborhood or through a park, try to connect into the spine trail. But it was just trying to concentrate on those to get the most coverage that we could. So what you see in the red is existing trails that we already have in place. And that's about 15 miles that we have in place at this point. But again, they're sporadic, and if you get on it, you don't have a very long distance to go. The green on here are the funded trails, which is about 13.5 miles. And when we say funded trails, one of the main ones that's going to be very beneficial to us is what we refer to frequently as the DCTA trail. It's a Lewisville trail that the DCTA is funding. That's a major spine, that's a regional trail, that's part of the Trinity Trail Network, and that's going to connect South Lewisville going through all the rail stations up to North Lewisville, and then with 35 going through, we're going to have access north of the lake. So that's very important that we have up there. We're fortunate recently to get the grant out of Lake Park on the trail out of Lake Park. That's in there with it. We've got a trail around the landfill over here. So we're in a short period of time just about going to double what we have on the ground in trails, which is very exciting. One thing that's important with the trails though that's different than a lot of cities, you talk about how built out we are and we're trying to come in and infill and retrofit a lot of areas. Because of that, we have challenges with our trails. Where do we go? They're not all off-street, off-road. Some of them are going to be enhanced sidewalks adjacent to the roadways, but we're still going to be able to provide the connectivity with that. Up here, we're showing just all the trails that are currently in place, the nature trails out of Lila. And then we're showing short-term master plan trails in yellow that with funding could come in in a relatively short period of time. Coming down Couple Street, I'm sorry, Garden Ridge over here, we're submitting a grant for that, it's due in the May. So that could be very short-term when that comes in. Purple is the Trail Master Plan, spine, long-term trails, that's 17 miles. That really helps connect through Lila, connect everything from here at Castle Hills back to the west. And then the dotted green that we have, it's really hard to see unless you're up close, that's a committee recommendation that was on here. It wasn't on the original Trail Master Plan, but that's a committee recommendation that we wanted to show.
One of the key questions is how do you get that connectivity across the interstate? The Trail Master Plan, I dealt with it differently with the committee. The committee actually talked about building a bridge across I-35 and College Street. The Trail Master Plan, Bob, you might talk generally about how that connection was achieved in the Trail Master Plan.
Well, there were several areas, and we do have the Trail Master Plan map here. We pulled that out. One of the sections in the master plan tried to address, how do we cross 35? And it was rather timely as we were doing the master plan that Tech Dot was taking a look at everything. So on our master plan, we have identified these areas. Some of them are underneath 35 and existing drainage areas, creek areas and so forth. And in particular, following the existing Valley Ridge Green Belt and coming across that way is what is on the master plan rather than the committee's suggestion of trying to go over 35 just south of there on College Street. So we've identified these areas, and it's in the master plan. Tech Dot has been made aware of all of the master plan all the way through. So we're going to try and make all of these connections as we can with the development of 35.
How many connections are we talking about?
We've got one up here that's going to be done right away at Garden Ridge that's going to tie in over the rail station, and that's going to be on a walkway going over. We're showing one here at 407, but that one's difficult because even if you get the crossing at 407, you'll know the traffic is on 407 and where you're going to take it. So we show it, but the likelihood of that one being the main connector is minimal. We're showing one going underneath 35 at Valley Ridge, like I mentioned. Then down here on Main Street, we're showing one going over on Main Street. And then we have another one down here at Fox, and then we're down Corporate.
So basically, you're telling us, you're telling us about the ones that are proposed and the ones that exist now? Is that correct?
We have no existing trail crossings currently.
But in the process of the reconstruction of the highway?
Correct.
All of those are in there. In the reconstruction of 35, all of those are in there.
We've got all of them in the plan, but as 35 goes, it changes frequently. So there could be changes to this, but we're trying to accomplish this as we move forward.
Mayor, if we could, David is really up on the I-35 plans and also what we just handed out is specifics on the DCTA trail. The DCTA trail as proposed in Lewisville looks very different from, if you're familiar with the DCTA trail that starts at that swisher and goes up to Denton. It's really a nice trail that runs right along beside the rail. It's not like that in Lewisville. And so I want David to walk me through that and explain that. I'm sorry, Carol, we're going into too much detail, I know, but I think this is important.
Yeah, you were all handed the schematic drawings, and it's broken up into three different segments, areas A, B, and C, starting with area A down to the south end. The Lewisville trail, the Lewisville trail is going to start at the Hebron Station. And DCTA is going to try to use as much of the existing sidewalk system and existing trails as they can. We've got a lot of four and five-foot sidewalks down there on the very south end that are going to expand, it'll be a minimum of eight feet, but in some instances, 10 feet where there's one. Then when you get up by Hebron Parkway, but actually, once you cross the trail and get over there toward Railroad Street, we already have an existing eight-foot trail that follows Railroad Street. And then as it goes up north of the landfill entrance, it sort of clears the light Railroad Street and follows kind of on top of the levee there on the side of Railroad Street as an eight-to-10 foot trail. And then continues north through the Railroad Street, the Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park, all the way up to Valley Ridge Boulevard is a 10-foot, yeah, 10-foot triangle. So there's very little work really to do on that south part. Then when you get back to Valley Ridge again, you've got a standard four-foot sidewalk along the west side of Valley Ridge. That will be expanded to an eight-to-10 foot trail all the way up to Business 121. And that's kind of where we go into the next segment, which is that area B.
So what's the length of that trail to the business, right? Section A, area A. There's only one highway crossing in that area, right?
Yeah, you do have to cross Hebron Parkway, but the only state highway you cross is Business Yeah, you have to cross Hebron Parkway, and then the next rail street crossing is way up at Business 121.
And all your street crossings will make it thoroughfare?
Thoroughfares like Hebron Parkway and Business 121 will be a pedestrian-controlled lighting system, signals.
So the pedestrians will be able to get across there?
Right. They'll just have to push the button and wait for the lights. That's the only problem with the road.
But only on the one side?
Push the button.
Right. But only on the one side of Valley can you cross 121? You can't be on the other corner. But as far as pedestrian control?
That's correct. That's correct. It's only on the west side.
When you get to the north side of Business 121, you actually will have to cross Valley Ridge from the west side or to the east side. And the reason for that is just simply because of the amount of ride of light. There's an unusually wide parkway between the back of Kerr and the landfill property on the east side of Valley Ridge. And so it provides a much better opportunity to have that eight-to-10 foot trail running up the east side of Valley Ridge Boulevard, which leads to College Street. When you hit College Street, things get just a little bit more interesting. College Street basically has existing four-foot sidewalks on both sides, and there's not a lot of room on either side of the street to build trails without purchasing additional property or easements. So what's being proposed is to maintain those existing four-foot sidewalks with pedestrians and then construct a light lane along the outside going in either direction on College Street from Valley Ridge Boulevard to Keely. Basically, those bike trails can be one-way on either side of College Street going in the same direction as traffic, and which would mean that we would have to keep parking on College Street on those outside lands. And of course, College Street being a 37-foot wide street ample room for vehicles and bicycles to share that and have that bicycle lane. Same thing on Keely, you continue north on Keely, another 37-foot wide street, doesn't have a lot of parkway, so to keep the bike lane in the street, pedestrians on the sidewalks. Again, there's not a lot of need for parking on Keely, so we put those bike lanes along the street. Then as you go further north, ultimately you'll hit our intersection of Valley Ridge again with Keely Street, and that's the future section of Valley Ridge that we're going to be digging pretty soon. Trail, we have an opportunity there to get trail back off the street and along the north side of Valley Ridge Boulevard. And when we build a street, we're going to be writing that such that the DCTA can then ultimately come in after we're done building the street and make that linkage without a lot of effort on the north side, connecting all the way over to Mill. That really moves us back into segment C.
Can I interrupt real quick? I don't see it. You're saying we're going...
No, that was the other thing I forgot. This particular handle, it came from DCTA, and it's actually the conceptual drawing that was, we started with. We have the final design plans now, and we're actually using Keely and Valley Ridge as opposed to what was originally going to go all the way to Mill Street and then all the way up Mill Street. So there is a slight deviation in what was originally planned versus what we ultimately ended up with simply because of ride of light physical conditions.
Does everybody see what David's talking about?
Then, once we get back to Mill Street, we continue along the east side of Mill Street. The DCTA line runs parallel to Mill Street, and there's plenty of area in that railroad right-of-way between the back of Kerr and the railroad to continue that wide trail along the east side of Mill Street. And when you get to Jones, you will have to cross Mill Street and get back over to the west side of Mill Street. And at that point...
But that's the limit of phase one?
Yeah, phase one.
That's the first construction.
Right. And then ultimately in phase two, which is future construction, you know, it continues to follow the DCTA rail as a eight-to-10 foot trail all the way up to Lake Lewisville Station.
And then the bridge across eventually?
Right, right. And then ultimately, you'll have the bridge across at the Lake Lewisville Station on our side. So that way now, you know, with this trail, we have the linkage between all three DCTA stations that are in Lewisville.
And then at Old Town?
At one point, I'd like to add, going across I-35, Tech Dot will be doing that in phase one construction as far as the crossing. Also, they'll be installing a footbridge, a Highland Village DoubleTree from their project over to the Lewisville side and tie actually the Highland Village trails into it. To that point, you said it's changing, but they have not made any changes to those five crossings that you talked about earlier, is that correct? Are you aware of that?
Well, in the ultimate schematic, it's not really changed. You know, we have to remember we've got phase one of I-35 and, for instance...
But they haven't notified us of any changes on the crossings that we were promised initially, correct?
I don't believe there are any changes in the other...
Okay, so we're operating under that premise. If that changes, I'd like to be notified before they start doing that, because I want to raise a cane about some changes.
The only change that they talked about in phase two is whether or not they're going to build a bridge at Perique Creek or they're going to use the large boxes at Perique Creek. That's the only change.
It's different because we're only building phase one of I-35. Some of those crossings won't be able to be installed with phase one, will have to wait for phase two.
But there's still a plan to be done, you may say?
Yes.
So I think David covered the sections there. Okay, so what you're seeing here in the details of that trail plan, one is, I think, that those connections that we heard about, the committees wanted to see, that we think is important for this extending the green. You also heard that this is something that can have short-term action, start to see those results, make the most of, making sure Tech Dot knows what you want as they do their work. And I think the other point that I kind of take from that is, as you look ahead to the later phases, there may be some opportunities to enhance the kinds of trails because clearly some of these trails are constrained by the existing development patterns. And so as you look further ahead, the idea of this extending the green big move would say that, you know, trying to do that for future projects is an important priority for Lewisville. So I don't know if you have other questions at this point for David, or if you'd like to go ahead and get into our discussion of this set of action priorities for this extending the green big move. And I'm sure with any other questions, obviously, we've got lots of folks here who can help answer. But let me ask you for further discussion on this big move of extending the green, connecting it throughout the city.
To me, I prioritize this one over the first one.
If you look at your citizen survey results, it is the number one priority.
We hear that over and over.
That's why I got involved. Exactly why I got involved.
Just highlight that.
The reason I got involved in this whole process is precisely because of this. I'm a bike rider, and the disconnect between the trails is why I got involved as a driver.
Okay, so lots of support from that, for the community for that as well. Other comments? Did you all see it as PJ suggested, this is really an important priority, big move? This is one that you want to really, really set as the top lighter?
I guess my question can be answered. How do you all feel about the plan of cleaning the creeks? Some thanks to my daddy.
Thanks to my money and resources. I saw both of you when he mentioned it the first time. It started with the vision.
Yeah, Carol didn't fall out of her chair.
Yeah, when you go back and look at what Bill suggested, what makes the biggest impact? Where do you get your biggest bang? You do that, and I think people just, it's just like when we fix a street, the woods edition. When you went in there and redid that street, you just saw people starting to take better care of their property and enhancing their properties. I think the same thing, you start doing that, people start enhancing their places and start to take a little more pride and ownership and do a little bit more of their own, extending the green around.
And a piece of that is accessibility. And we have a lot of neighborhoods that have been built where, hey, you look at Summit, Summit's a great example, it's right by my house. I can't get out of Summit without a car. It's designed to make, and a lot of the neighborhoods are, they're designed to make you get in a car. in a car and go anywhere because of the way the fences are built, the way the walls are built.
Security.
It's security, my little neighborhood, but I can't engage...
You can't connect to the rest of the city.
...free space.
Okay, so Mayor, it looks to me like there is some support for that idea here of cleaning up the creeks as well as the concentration on the trail systems.
Mayor, council, just to give you a little understanding on creeks, we own probably about 80% of the creeks, the right-of-way within the creeks. There are some that are privately held. Timber Creek Regency Drive, for example, is one of them. Timber Creek along corporate east of 121 Business and actually some west of 121 Business, property owners onto the center line. So those areas, we generally do not clean, go on private property. But a majority, getting some of the majority, you know, those are public and we have access and interest in those.
Well, what I think might happen, I could be, well, what I think might happen is once, if we do a couple of creeks, the ones that we own, then you go to those people that own those and they'd be willing to say, hey, if you come to that, we'll donate the right-of-way there, we'll donate this piece of our property back to the city, you know, and you can come get it cleaned up.
Yeah, once you've set that example. Okay, so what I'm hearing from you all would be, and as I'm looking at this set of action priorities, I would suggest that when we come back to you with the draft document, that we add an action priority in this big move that specifically relates to the creeks.
That's just my thought.
Let me ask if y'all are comfortable with that direction? Yep, yep?
Talking about looking into it?
Yes. Okay, so we will make that note and Jamie, if I can ask you to start that. There we go. Okay. Other discussion about this extending the green big move? Other comments on these action items?
I really liked, it was mentioned yesterday on our trip, and you had mentioned a little bit about Stormwater Brains and how he's done it here.
Right.
And just kind of did it naturally, natural swale and, I mean, as opposed to these close pipes and maintenance that goes along with it. I think again, around Castle Hills, it was great.
Yeah, you can see that is a great example of it. There are examples around the country and the results that are coming in are ones that are saying it's cost-effective, it increases the value of the adjacent homes.
How realistic or how much opportunity we have for that in Louisville?
Well, yesterday I brought that same subject up to speed. And the point that I gave away really after that conversation was that it takes up more space. Is that not what you told me when I said how I felt about that?
Yes, sir. And it does take a little more space to get your slopes and your grades and everything in place. We are, where we have most locations, Valley Ridge is one of them, between Mill and Keely. I believe we do have some open areas, some storage, drainage, the water. It's not a true open area, but there is some storage of that water. I think where we have area that's undeveloped, we can consider those, look at those. But again, trying to go back in and retrofit an existing pipe system will be very difficult. There's some areas that we could do, our major carriers, Prairie Creek and Timber Creek, of course, or open some of the side, Fox Creek, Ralston Park area, those are all open channels. But where we can, we can look into that. Yes, David?
And I think a part of that is there's been work in the region on what those design standards would look like. COG has been working with the communities and I know you all have been involved with that as well.
If I want to mention, then we'll have that out. I'm sorry, Karen.
Yeah.
David? We'll also have an opportunity coming up from the area of future with corporate drive extension. A brand-new four-length divided archery, and we're going to have the opportunity to design that pretty soon. And so we will have that opportunity, we'll bond to incorporate some of that into that design.
So this would be the point that as you're doing new ones, it really makes sense to do that as part of this character that you want to create. It is definitely harder to retrofit, but I think Nika's point is also good about as you look at redevelopment, there may be opportunities to do.
Down the ridge are our last two major opportunities to make these investments.
All in the region.
All right, so glad to hear that support break. Other comments on these recommendations?
A question on the funded trails that we were looking at, the green funded trails, what time period are we looking at to complete those?
DCTA is currently funding at 1.9 million, I'm hiding it in my lap here.
Well, if you're going to answer, you can just hold it up and listen to it.
And that's basically underway. So that funding is available. And that's the major funded trail that we show on the map. Anything else? Oh, and the grant, the grant that we just recently received in Lake Park. Those are due to...
Part of the 1.9, they just apply for that application on entire grant. They actually have 3 million already in place. They have basically 4.9 million and a $6 million cost, and they're matching at 35%. So there's really, the work with DCTA is we have, quote, no direct expense in, tax drivers do.
The city?
The city does not.
Okay. Other direction on this is, is this, I believe what I'm hearing from you is that this big move of extending the green is indeed something that you see as an important priority, that these action items that we've identified are good ones, that we need to add one related to the cleanup of the creeks and using the creeks more effectively, I think, in that green infrastructure kind of a way where we can.
With ties into our life.
Yeah, okay.
A quick comment on the creeks, and David can talk about this, but we'll keep it brief. But we've actually seen Fox Creek neighborhood asking the city can include this. So it's not just us saying, let's do this for you. The neighborhoods are asking us to please do it.
So you've got that, you've got that support. You've got that support. They're ready, waiting, is what you're saying.
Back to that, that's been happening to the city for years, not on pay, but on cost. It's not, it's a, like I was saying, what they fix it.
Yeah, right. So is that, looking at that, is that a good investment to make? Okay. Other comments on extending the green? Are we comfortable to move ahead? And Gina, did your other food shift out? So Mayor, at this point, you might want to give people a chance to get up and get some coffee and whatever refreshments, take a few minutes to do that. Mayor, do you?
Mayor, what?
The snacks are here.